Is the biggest part of the political process. So thank you so much for having me.
Well, thank you, representative and in all of you candidates for participating in our forum. We will now take make a shift to the county commission candidates. So we'll take a break here and while we transition here on the Zoom forum. I'd like to remind you that there are a couple of local ballot questions that Grashit County voters will see on their ballots this year. There is a millage proposal for mid Michigan Community College to add the votership, if you will, represented by the R E S D to their community college district to help provide them with additional revenues that will lower the tuition costs for Grashit County students as well as students in the other outlying areas of the R E S D. Also on your ballot in Pine River Township, the city of Ithaca and St. Louis, you'll see a proposal for a public transit millage to help expand what's typically referred to as Elma diala ride services into all of Pine River Township, all of St. Louis and all of Ithaca. So be sure to check your ballots, whether you're mailing in your ballot or voting in person for those two important millage questions. So it's like we have everyone here, Brendan. All right, great. Well, again, we are presenting to you tonight candidates for Grashit County Board of Commissioners. Again, we have an email address, grass reform at gmail dot com, where you can submit questions for these candidates. So with that, we'll get started. With us tonight, we have four candidates representing three districts, if I've got that right. We'll give each of you two minutes for opening remarks and then we'll proceed with some questions. So George Bailey in the fifth district, you're on my top left of my screen. So we have you go first.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Once again, I come to visit all of you in this strange era of COVID and zooming and all these things, but I, once again, I'll remind everybody, I've spent forty-four years in business. I spent twenty-two years at the city of Ithaca. I spent the last five years with the county. I'm a veteran. I have two children, five grandchildren, and I'm very busy. But I enjoy being busy. I am older than most of you on the screen. In fact, I dare say all of you that I'm seeing on the screen right now. But no. My passion has been and been for many years, serving the public and doing what I could for the citizens of the city of Ithaca, now for the fifth district, which includes Emerson, Lafayette, Hamilton, North Star, Elba and Washington Townships. And during the primary, I was very fortunate and had a lot of support from my townships that they recognized that I've been able to help them a lot. So that's about all I got to say now.
We'll move now to the fourth district running as a Republican, John Lemberman. Would you care to comment?
Sure. And thank you to the Grashit Area Chamber of Commerce for having this event and for inviting me to speak tonight. I'm originally from Northwest Ohio. I grew up on a farm and graduated from Ohio State University with a B S in agriculture. And I have been in financial services for thirty-two years. And for the last eight years, I've owned my own business in Clinton County, offering financial services. I'm basically, this will be my first run for public office. And I'm basically running as an anti-status quo candidate. I've seen how the Grashit County budget has grown about twenty percent over the last ten years. And I've seen how the employee salaries have grown about twenty percent over the last ten years. And I really see this as a situation where my cost to be in Grashit County has gone up every year, but it seems like the money has stayed in a virtual loop that I can't really see any improvement for myself. I can't really see any improvement in the living conditions in Grashit County. So I'm just running to try to look at things differently, look at things in a new way and try to improve what Grashit County is doing.
Thank you. Tim Lambrecht, running as a Democrat for the fourth district. Welcome.
Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Brendan. I think this is the introduction segment. So let me tell you a little bit about myself. For a little over thirty years, my wife and I have lived in Grashit County. Our two kids have graduated from school here. One of them even graduated from Elma College. During most of that time, I worked for Ithaca Schools. I was a teacher for many of those years, coach, school administrator. I was interim principal, interim assistant principal, assistant superintendent, chair of the school improvement committee at the high school for about twenty-five years. Also, over the years, I actually started a small business in Elma, Arbor Grove Assisted Living with my partners that now employs forty-five people. My current position is I'm the Director of Education for Budget Challenge. It's a national online financial literacy program that's been used by over eight hundred thousand students. You know, I got involved in community service basically because, you know, you got to practice what you preach. And as a social studies teacher, I would always stress the importance of, you know, getting involved locally to make your community a better place. So over the years, I've been on the Red Cross Board when we had a Red Cross here, numerous United Way allocations committees, a bunch of master plan groups, envisioning groups. I was part of the team that led the effort to get the millage for MSU Extension in greater Grashit. I was chair of the Elma Planning Commission for over a decade. I think I served on the planning commission for sixteen years. Besides my commissioner responsibilities, I serve on the Grashit Community Foundation Board. I serve on, I'm a member of the Friends of the Pine River, and I've been actively participating in the Elma Aspires Group, which is really looking at, you know, revisioning, you know, how we can make Elma a better place. I'm also an elder in my church. And, you know, really, my motivation is not to shake things up. You know, I'm trying to make our community a great place to live, work, play and raise a family. My educational background is in administration at the master's level. And I have a lot of experience in that and finance, law and government. And that seems to work well with the job of county commissioner, which is really oversight. You know, really just trying to make things run smoothly, trying to watch our taxpayers' dollars and provide the best services we can to the people.
Thank you. And our fourth candidate with us tonight is Jan Bunting, running as a Republican in the second district.
Thank you. And thank you, Gary, for all that you've done this evening. I'm Jan Bunting, county commissioner of the second district. That would be Wheeler Township, Breckenridge, Bethany Township and also St. Louis. And I have been on the board for twenty years. And George is the oldest person. I'm probably the second oldest on the board. And we're always arguing who's oldest. But anyway, I have served on a lot of boards in that twenty years. I've been on the Mobile Medical Response Board probably since I started. I'm now on MSU Extension Board Agriculture. I'm also on Great Lakes, Michigan Works Board. That is five county board, and that has to do with your, with finding jobs here in Grashit County. In the past, I've been on the area chamber board. I've been on the little of the Minton Board. I've been on the mental health board. Was looking at some of these parks and recreation. I've been on the women's, Elma Women's Club Membership Board, Rural Urban Day Committee. I've been an ambassador to the area Chamber of Congress. I've been on that board too. So I've served on a lot of boards. And as I've served on a lot of boards, I've also had a lot of jobs in my lifetime. I'm kind of a workaholic. I started right out of high school. Actually, I was in high school when I first started working as a waitress in Owasso. That's where I graduated from and grew up is in Owasso. Originally, I'm from Isabel County. I was born there. And my mother and father both are from Isabel and Grashit County. And most of my relatives live and still live in these two counties. I had three brothers, one sister and many cousins. When I was out of high school, I went to work for the Kirby Company where I worked for five years. I was secretary of the office. Then I also sold Kirby vacuums. I repaired them. I did collections. And one of the things that I find about myself is that I want to do, I want to learn everything there is to learn. So every time I do get a job, I usually do multiple different jobs. I've also worked at Clover, which used to be cartridges or us in Ithaca. And again, I had several different jobs there. It was always fun whenever they needed a volunteer to do something different. I was that volunteer. And now I work as a pair pro for the schools, Elma schools. There's four over there. Yes, four. And I'm sorry, there's three over there. And then there's four here in St. Louis that I'm a pair pro. And again, I like learning everything right along with the kids. I find after being out of school for several years, I'm a little rusty on some of the math and some of the other subjects that they have. So anyway, that's kind of, I'm kind of retired, but I'm not retired. I probably will never retire. I will work someplace doing something. And that's what I enjoy doing. One of the other things that I've been very, very blessed is to have so many great, great friends here in Grashit County and supporters. And also I've been very blessed to do a lot of traveling throughout the world, which that was kind of my goal as a child growing up. I wanted to be an airline stewardess so I could travel all around the world. While I was never an airline stewardess, I was too short at that time. And but I did get to travel to a lot of countries and around the United States.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you. We're going to move on. We're going to jump into some questions now. So our first question, what are the county's biggest infrastructure challenges? And if elected, reelected, how do you plan to address them? Start at the bottom of my screen with Mr. Lambrecht.
I'm on the top of my screen. You know, if you think about the reach of the county, you know, we've got a fair number of physical buildings, you know. So we've got a beautiful historic courthouse building, which is pretty amazing, but it's also over a hundred years old. And it requires a lot of TLC. And in fact, one of the things that we've got budgeted for coming up is some overdue roof repairs, which are going to be six figures expensive. And, you know, as a fairly significant property owner, you know, that's really what the county's infrastructure is. So if you think about the different buildings we have, the different facilities that we have, you know, the Commission on Aging Building, you know, we've got a road commission building, we've got a drain commission building. We've got a law enforcement center with the jail. And in fact, as we look towards the future, you might have heard that Isabella County, you know, was planning to, you know, build a new jail because their jail is about as old as our jail and those buildings have a lifespan. And, you know, they get to a point where things have changed in terms of, you know, how we deal with corrections, the corrections population, you know, just the efficiency of the building. And the reality is probably sometime in the next decade or so, that's something that we're also going to have to consider. And that will be a very big project because it not only is about building a building, but it's about that transition. Because, you know, you can't just put prisoners in the parking lot while you knock down the old building and then build the old one. So those are some of the things that we're looking at in terms of infrastructure challenges.
Thank you. Mr. Lemberman.
I really liked Mr. Lambrecht's answer, and I think he was spot on on many things. But I think one of the challenges will be, just like tonight, we're on a Zoom meeting. Most of us are at our own homes. And the question is going to be investment in buildings versus spending time with software and attending meetings like this. And so I almost think that some infrastructure spending almost has to be put on hiatus until we see if life's going to get back to normal or if we have a new set of circumstances that we have to deal with.
Mr. Bailey, can you answer that question, please?
We have a lot of different challenges. I look at it as twofold. In the last four years, we have considerable investments within our, within our electronic system, if you will, being able to bring Zoom meetings into the chambers, doing upgrades of computers, printers. When I got there five years ago, we were in a desperate strait. We were doing old technology. We were spending dollars that really weren't giving us our bang for our buck. And so the last four years, we have put together a comprehensive plan with our, with our financial director and been able to put some much-needed dollars into infrastructure of that nature. When the COVID hit, we had just a meeting before that, put our meetings on YouTube live. We were fortunately ahead of the curve on that. And so with our, with our technical director, Matt Hewitt, we've been able to patch Zoom in quite easily compared to a lot of other people. So our public was never without, when we started meetings, they were always being able to attend meetings through the YouTube channel. So that was really a great thing. We've been able to work remotely, that's for sure. But the courthouse is really the people's house. People come there all the time to do many different things. We have treasurer, clerk, register of deeds, court system. We have, those things are never going to go away. People are always going to have to go in there to do some work of some kind. So when you, when you say about not keeping up your buildings, people are always going to be in those buildings. So you have to maintain them. Once you go get behind, like the county got behind in the middle of two thousands, we've been catching up ever since. We're on, we're on track right now to actually pay the debt off in two thousand twenty-six. So I'll be quiet now, but there's a lot of things that we have been able to do with our infrastructure.
Ms. Bunting, can you respond to that question?
Yes, I have to tell you, I feel a little bit different. Maybe because I've traveled to other countries, but there are so many places I've been to where their building is a thousand years old and they just maintain it. And when I say a thousand, I've been to a church that was a thousand years old. I've been to, if you go to Europe, all their buildings are in the hundreds and thousands of years old. What I would like to see with all of the money that's pouring into Grashit County from the wind turbines, I would like to see instead of us taking out millages, start funding some of the things that the people of the county want, such as the transportation throughout the whole county. That is a big thing, being able, there's people that live like in Ashley or Breckenridge that need a ride to go to the doctor's office. And, you know, it costs money. But I don't think it's that much out of line to where the county can afford to pay for some of this stuff. Another good one was, oh, it slips my mind real quick. That was one of the big ones was the transportation. Oh, the airport, that was another one. We have an airport that has been there for, I think, I'm not sure, fifty years now. And I don't think, the thing that people don't realize is that when somebody has cancer, the hospital or they need to go to a clinic outside of Michigan, the airport flies these people to that clinic and brings them back. And it's my understanding that there's been no cost on that. And I'm, and I don't know that for a hundred percent sure, but I've been told that there's been many families that could not afford it and someone from the airport would fly them where they needed to go. So there's a lot of things that the airport does for the community. And I think that they, there's two things, transportation of the airport, transportation, getting people around the county. That's, to me, is a low dollar and easy to fund. And yet we don't do it. There's not enough votes to get it through. So that's the kind of things I'd like to see the county do is to do more for the people in the county. I know it's, I know the building of the courthouse is old, but there's a lot of buildings much older than that courthouse. And I think, no matter what you have, whether you build a new building, it always takes maintenance and it always takes money.
Let's stay on infrastructure with our next question. The chamber believes that a comprehensive assessment of the county's drinking water and sewage assets is needed to help identify and develop funding resources to ensure clean drinking water for our citizens and protect our environment. How can the county help make that happen? Let's start top left, Mr. Bailey.
Well, it's being a rural county, it's very difficult. We have municipal water systems within our larger communities, but the majority of the people live out in the country. And their water systems are really regulated by the Health Department, which the county funds to some, to a certain degree. We almost put three hundred thousand dollars a year into the Health Department. We're a member of three county Health Department, Clinton, McCombe and Grashit. So I would dare say that our drinking water has always been monitored and will continue to be monitored. I think where you're coming from on that is the PFAS problem that we seem to have. We did have a case outside of Ithaca. It's been, it's been deemed not migrating. It's on a clay bed and it's not, we've tested all the homes around. Ithaca has been tested thoroughly. They will continue to test. So we don't have a migration there. They're looking now at ways to clean that site up. In Elma, I believe there's another PFAS site that is at the old total refinery area. That has all been tested and that is being monitored. So right now, that really, working through the Health Department, and that's the best thing we can do as the county right now, is to work through and fund them to make sure that we get our expertise and working on those situations.
Mr. Lambrecht, can you respond to that question, please?
Good afternoon. I guess I'll just pick up where Chairman Bailey left off. I mean, she's right. You know, there's essentially, you know, when you think about both drinking water and wastewater, there's two systems that exist in the county. You've got the municipal systems. And, you know, the municipal systems, you know, especially with the Elma-St. Louis Water Authority have made some pretty enormous strides in, you know, providing water for their folks. In fact, you know, we're no longer pulling water out of the Pine River, which is a good thing in light of some of the pollution issues that it has. And then as Mr. Bailey pointed out, then, you know, you've got the water systems that exist, you know, outside of the municipal systems, you know. And in both cases, in both the case of drinking water and, you know, wastewater, it's a Health Department issue, if there's an issue. I think in terms of, you know, as these issues evolve and if the issues become bigger issues, I think, you know, the role of the county besides, you know, the Health Department role is kind of the role that the county has historically played in the case that there's any kind of countywide problem. You know, Jan mentioned the airport, which is a good topic in terms of infrastructure. But, you know, it's also kind of an example of how, you know, when there is a problem and, you know, years ago, when the airport was basically, you know, running out of money, municipalities stepped up and we created an airport authority to continue to fund the airport and keep it going. And we just had a study done on the airport. And one of the conclusions was it was amazing, you know, for what we paid, how well it's working. We're in the process now of changing that, you know, and that may end up, you know, coming under more auspices of the county. But I think, you know, we're a small enough county where people know each other and talk to each other all the time. And we're very good at getting together and figuring things out.
Thank you. Ms. Bunting, can you answer that question, please?
Well, I got to tell you that I follow along of the work that, there's a group of people that have been working on this project with the water, especially the one out in Riverdale and all the problems that they had out there. And I have not been that involved in it because I've been involved in so many other things that's taken my time. I kind of just, I'm kind of the listener and waiting to do what support maybe they might need. I don't, I don't think it's going to be money. I think it's going to be trying to find a solution. And so I'm just kind of like sitting back and waiting to see where I might fit in at some time.
Thank you. And Mr. Lemberman.
The only thing I have to add is, you know, to try to investigate and see what's out there. And perhaps there is some kind of a cheap test that we could make available to people, I think especially in rural areas, giving, given the, you know, the roundup class action lawsuits and different things like that, that might have worked its way into the groundwater. I have talked to doctors who've said that there are, there seem to be more rare cancers. I think we talked about this a little bit in the first event that you guys spoke on. I would like to see some kind of a test that would be available to people. But I know of nothing like that that exists right now.
Thank you. So we're coming up on our final, the final minutes or our final hour. So I have, we'll ask one more question. We'll see if we have any from our audience. Appears we don't. So our last question tonight is, Grashit County is known throughout the state as a great collaborator. When we have problems, when we have things we want to achieve, we get together, we put our heads together and we get it done. What do you believe are the key components to a successful public-private partnership? Mr. Lemberman, I'll let you go first.
I heard you ask earlier tonight, what you were asking candidates, what their definition of leadership was. And I think in many respects, it's the same answer. I think you have to have people of intelligence and vision to be able to sort and prioritize what is important and then have great communication skills and charisma as far as promoting the agenda and getting community buy-in into the agenda. And just by, by being able to properly communicate about issues and getting the buy-in behind the issues that you want to collaborate on, I think that's how you make those things happen.
Ms. Bunting.
I got to tell you, I think John hit it right on the head. I think that I go to all my meetings in all my townships and I listen to see what's going on in their community and what their needs are. And I think that, I just think you've got to be listening and working for the community. When I first started as a commissioner, I was told I'm a liaison between the county and my district. And that's what I've always told myself, listen to what they're saying and whatever it is that I can do to help them get what they need or what they are trying to have done, that is probably the most important part of my job.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, what Jan said goes a long ways. You not only have to listen to your constituents, but you've got to help them through problems. I would, I am working right now with four townships to put a blank ordinance in place that the county will be able to help them with. We are getting to the point now where the different townships will be voting on that ordinance. I would hope, and we're planning on by the first of the year, having that in place. So then the county will be able to take their permits department and their inspectors to help individual cases within those townships. And it's a pilot program. But we've had a lot of cases outside the townships that they've been But we've had a lot of cases outside i- i- uh, the townships that they've been struggling with. They don't have the money to do the prosecution, sorry, cat got in the way. Uh, to do the prosecution. And so with our resources, we can help them do that. And so that's one of the, the, the big things that we really been working on. And it's gonna come to fruition here pretty quick. Uh, another thing also is the airport, we've been working with the airport authority. And one of, one of the things that I think you have to do is you have to gain trust with the people you're working with. They have to be able to trust that what you say is what you mean and, and you're gonna get the job done. And, and, and that's what's work, we're working on that airport situation and it's gonna be able to resolve, uh, with a good resolution here very shortly, I believe.
And finally, Mr. Lambert.
Sure. And, and you had asked about public-private partnerships, correct, Gary? Okay, okay, thank you. I, um, you know, a, a really visible example of a successful public-private partnership is what happened to the Elma Opera House. You know, I mean, you get a fire in the middle of your downtown and it wipes out a building and then what do you do with it? And, you know, it certainly was a long process, but it started off with an individual investor working with the city, you know, to try and turn that into something that was bigger and better than it was before. You know, that project hit some snags and, you know, it, it was a little iffy. And then the college, along with some local, uh, partners, you know, who were really interested in the viability of downtown Elma stepped up. And what we have really is, is, you know, we're two-thirds of the way to having a, a showpiece in the middle of our community. And, and that was a public-private partnership, you know, um, without either side, you know, working with the other. It, it wouldn't have happened and there'd probably be a pile, there'd probably just be a green space there right now. I think, you know, probably the best example of, of public-private partnership that, that I've been directly involved in, as I mentioned it before, is, you know, you know, getting the, the millage passed for Greater Grasset Development when, when actually the board had voted to, to stop funding it. Um, and, you know, Greater Grasset Development, really, that's, that's really what they're all about is, is, you know, they're, they're a public-private partnership in themselves. And often what they do is work with private investors, work with companies. Um, on the one side, connect them and work, help them work through kind of the public hoops that you have to jump through, um, which can be very daunting, you know, I mean, yeah, how do you, how do you get all this, these brownfield tax credits? You know, the public throws those out there, you know, they're, they're out there, but you gotta know how to, how to take advantage of them. Um, you know, you know, how do you get a rea- this historic rehabilitation zone in your downtown? And, and, you know, by creating that entity, you know, what we've really done is, is we've, we've allowed dozens of projects that would have never happened. You know, ranging from the, the soybean processing plant to the, you know, the fuel plant to even the payday loan place in downtown Elma, that building was the downtown bakery, but was also brownfield. Um, because at one point it was a gas station. And, and again, nobody wants to develop a, a piece of property that had gas tanks underneath. And, and so, you know, that's probably the epitome of, of, you know, I would argue, one of the most successful public-private partnerships in the state, and we've got it right here.
Thank you. So we're, we're down to our final minute or minutes, um, uh, of our forum. Um, I'm gonna take moderator prerogative and see if I can get each of you to take one minute, uh, for closing remarks. Uh, Ms. Bunting, we'll start with you.
Okay, well, I just wanna thank you for putting this on again. And I wanna thank all of the, all of the people in Grasset County for their support and electing us and their trust in us. And I'll just take my one minute and not take too much other time.
Thank you. Mr. Lambrecht?
Um, you know, I, I first got on the commission in two thousand seven, you know, basically because people had asked me to. Um, and it was funny because I got on and then we had the Great Recession. And, and because everybody said, ah, it's not that much work. And, and then we were trying to figure out, you know, how to provide services to people. Um, without, you know, laying off a bunch of staff, we worked with our staff. And we got through it and I think we got through it stronger. Um, the, one of the good things that happened during that time was, is we passed the Uniform Wind Ordinance. You know, it was the first of its kind in the United States. And, you know, if you would have asked me, you know, would I predict it would have been what it is today, I'd say no, you know, it's, it's, it's done more than anybody I think could have possibly imagined. I mean, wind energy projects have, have put forty-three million dollars um, into local units of government and school districts, uh, coffers, you know, over the, the last decade. Um, as well as, you know, putting money into, into lease payments and maintenance jobs and construction jobs. Um, you know, in two thousand ten, my kids were at an age where I couldn't run and be a, a dad and a commissioner at the same time because they were in a lot of sports. So I didn't run again until two thousand fourteen, once again, to people asked me. And at that time, you know, we had some problems, you know, we were getting deficiencies in our audits, you know, we had a, a, a administrator who could be gone thirty days at a time down in Florida. Um, and, and, you know, over the past six years, I think, working with our, my fellow commissioners, we've done some great things. We paid down debt, we've eliminated a two-point-three-million-dollar pension liability, we refinanced our pension plan, which, you know, used to cost us, when the last year we paid on that was one-point-three-million dollars. It had gone up almost double in ten years. Um, now we've, we've flattened it out at eight-hundred-thousand dollars a year and in two thousand twenty-six it'll be paid for. Um, so, you know, we've done a lot of good things. We've expanded recreational opportunities, supporting business. I, I thought the county did a good job responding to coronavirus, providing PPE. And so I just wanna continue if the tact or if the voters will, will let me to do what we're doing.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lemberman.
Well, uh, again, thank you for having me tonight and for putting this event on. Um, I'm basically running because, uh, I think the county can do more. Um, I will be the voice at meetings that will be asking, how can we do these things cheaper? How can we spare resources in the things that we're doing to try to put more money into other things? Uh, I have sat in on, uh, Zoom meetings and YouTube presentations. And it seems like the criteria for success is often, we're doing better than the average county. Or we're doing better than, uh, the, you know, an, an, uh, aggregate of an average county. And I don't think that really resonates with the citizens of Grasset County. Uh, I, I think, uh, the, the feeling by many people is that we're not going forward fast enough, we're falling behind. And, uh, maybe the, the room to maneuver is very tight, maybe there's so many mandated things that we have to do that there's not that much room to maneuver, especially paying off these pension debts. But, uh, I would like to see if we could do things more cheaply and spare more resources to be able to plow into things that, uh, you know, citizens want and desire like Jan, Jan Bunting's, uh, desire for more mass transit.
Hey, Mr. Bailey, we'll let you, you have the last word on the evening.
Well, thank you. Once again, we appreciate your, uh, efforts tonight and allowing us to come on and, and speak. Um, I've enjoyed myself the last five years. Uh, immensely. I've been able to help a lot of people. We have revamped the county finances. We have an end date to have all the bills paid by two thousand twenty-six. We're looking at things out in the future to do. Um, maybe there's a, a lot of things that we expound on, but, but, uh, I think we quietly go about doing a very good job. We've been able to manage to keep the budget flat. Uh, we've been able to take an enormous amount of debt and, and, and pay it down. We've been able to, uh, take our, our, uh, our OPEB, uh, such, uh, insurance, which is the insurance that we have to pay mandated by the state. We have to have a fund available for all the insurances for our retirees that had insurance be- before things were changed. So that totals about two million dollars. So we had to, we have to, to, to do that. We've, we've got a million, uh, a, a little over a million and a half right now. We got about five-hundred-thousand dollars to go and we'll have that paid for. So when, when I came to the county, there was a lot of debt, a lot of debt. And we made a lot of changes within the county system to make it work. We got a, we got a financial director that, that has really helped us out and, and shown us the areas that we can save costs on. We've done a, 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 a cost analysis on most everything. We've changed, uh, we have a procurement specialist now that buys things for the county. When I came on, everybody bought their own. It was a fragmented situation and we, we got that under control now. We have, we have a contract that, that person that, 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 uh, does a procurement, also does contract review. Before, everybody bought stuff, had different contracts, all came through at a different time. We've done a lot of things in the last few years to, to bring us up to a standard that, 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 uh, people start to recognize. In fact, uh, Mr. Mr. Lam- Lambert was reiterating to me, he knew, he was, knew someone in Port Huron that, that he was talking to about how we managed our retirement. And lo and behold, they're doing the same thing that we di- did a couple of years ago. We managed to, to control that debt. And so there's a lot of things that we've been able to do over time that we do quietly sometimes because we don't get the notoriety maybe in the paper. But we're all working every day diligently to help all the people of Grasset County. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you to all the candidates this evening. Uh, good luck in your races. Uh, we appreciate you participating in this forum. I also wanna thank the RESD for, uh, hosting this event. And all of you, uh, out there who viewed and participated and sent in questions, thank you very much. Uh, please go out and vote, whether you do it by mail or do it in person, it's your one chance to be sure your voice is heard. So thank you and vote again in November. Have a good evening.